Alright, we'll call the order. The Selma City Council Regular Meeting, April 1st, 2019. We are at 6:07 PM. And our invocation tonight will be led by Pastor Nelson Schwab, Church of the Redeemer.
Good evening, Mayor Robertson, Mayor Protem Franco, Councilmember Avalos, Garrett, and Trahio. Thank you for this opportunity to be here again tonight to offer a prayer of invocation for this council meeting. Let's pray. Father, I'd like to thank you for this day that you have given us, and I want to rejoice in your work within our lives and within our community. I thank you for the community of Selma and for the individuals, families, churches, organizations, and businesses that have worked hard to make this a great community in which to live. I pray for your presence and your blessing over this council meeting tonight, and pray that you give wisdom and grace to each council member and city staff member as they continue to work for our community. I pray for each person that is present here tonight to address this council, give wisdom where wisdom is needed and grace where grace is needed. Pray that all that is done would be done for your glory. I also offer a prayer of thanks for the student athletes of Selma High School, girls' basketball team, and the wrestling program that are here tonight to receive recognition for their achievements. I also thank you for the Boys and Girls Club for the work that they do with children and teens. I pray this tonight in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
Can we all stand for the flag salute? Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Avalos.
Here.
Councilmember Garrett.
Here.
Councilmember Trahio.
Here.
Mayor Protem Franco.
Here.
Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Okay, potential conflicts of interest. Any council member who has a potential conflict of interest may announce the item now and recuse themselves from discussing or voting on the matter. Tonight, because we have a number of very successful teams here tonight to be recognized and organizations, we're going to switch the order of the proceedings. We are going to put special presentations on now to be followed by oral communications from citizens. So with that, I am going to come down. And we're going to do the presentations. We have two extraordinary teams here tonight, representatives. We have the Selma High Girls Basketball Team, and we have the representative from the high school and two of our state champion wrestlers. You know, it's been an incredible season, and both the basketball teams and the wrestling teams are known for working extremely hard and never giving up. You know, and those are qualities which win you a lot of games and a lot of matches, but they get you even farther in life. And that's what we have tonight. We have a real success story that we should be proud of. And with that, I would like to bring up the athletic director from Selma High School, Randy Israelian. He is going to help with the distribution of the certificates of distinction up here. You could call up the coach and hear the certificates.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. And I want to thank the council for having Selma High School representation here tonight and share our successes for this winter. Obviously, Mike Kersner for helping organize and get me to get everybody here tonight. So thank you, Mike. And then I want to also introduce Dr. Fisher, our superintendent, and Guillermo Lopez, our principal. We, obviously, it takes a lot of resources to put all this together, and each winner, Selma High School has a rich tradition of success, and this one has been no different. I first want to talk a little bit about our Lady Bear Basketball Squad. Obviously, I'll introduce Coach, and he'll get to say a few words, and you'll get introduced to some very, very fine young student athletes that have represented Selma in extreme fashion. But obviously, Lady Bear Basketball has been very successful over the last ten, going on eleven years, with Coach Romig at the helm. We had something done in history. We had a few things done this winter that were historic at Selma High School. One being, we have a section finals. Lady Bear Basketball Team that won Division III in the Central Section. So that was one that hasn't been done in history. Coach Romig, Coach Vieira, and Fluellen have been kind of the cogs behind making all that happen. And I do want to say that what they accomplished, not only through the Central Sequoia League, but through the section at Sullen Arena, made not only the Selma High School and Selma unified very proud, but also the community of Selma. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Coach Paul Romig. Coach Vieira and Fluellen, and then the ladies will come up as well.
Well, thank you kindly. I'm honored and privileged to be able to represent these young ladies as a coach. First, I want to make sure that we recognize both Mr. Israelian and Mr. Lopez for their support, not only on campus, but at our games, and especially on the road, be it the section championship game at Sullen Arena or on the road near Palo Alto. So their support is very much appreciated and noted. And like Mr. Israelian pointed out, Coach Vieira and Coach Fluellen, very instrumental in what we were able to do, and the girls, just a fantastic job, not only representing their school, but I think more importantly, our community, and letting everyone know what Selma's all about, who maybe not have heard before, but now they fully understand. So we're going to do it by class. We're going to have our seniors first. Rachel Vieira, who is our all-time leading scorer in the history of the program. Samantha Sodolte. Zoe Gonzalez. Madison Morris. Daniela Cuevas. And our sophomores, Gianna Luhon. Yessenya Sanchez, who is the MVP in the championship game for the section. And last, but certainly not least, the Defensive Player of the Year for the league, Elena Lalamal. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach, and thank you, ladies, for being here. They are going to get pizza afterwards, but that's, that got them here anyway. I now want to introduce, obviously, a very key member of our coaching staff as well, and I'm going to be biased. I think he's among the Valley and the state's best at what he does. I really believe that. I believe we have some really good head coaches, and I believe that for our student athletes, you know, they do, they put them in successful situations. And I told you, we had two things that hadn't happened in Selma High School history, and I'm going to call up. We had a first-time-ever Model Coach Award from the State CIF. Our section and myself nominated our wrestling coach, and he went through the process and was named the State CIF Model Coach of the Year, and there was ten of them from ten sections. Sam Lopez, can you please come forward? So I'm going to read to you what the state media release said about Coach Lopez. Lopez has been coaching wrestling for thirty years, with the last ten years at Selma High School. He is all about instruction, technique, and enforcing strategy. His experience among strong skills in the areas of wrestling, leadership, and his fair objective put him in a class of his own. He should be recognized for his character, willingness, and student-centered approach for what he does best with student athletes. Sam Lopez. So thanks again, Sam, for all you do. We have two, obviously, incredible athletes that we brought tonight to be recognized. And when I say incredible, I mean, to be a state champion in wrestling is beyond what the normal is, and I'd like to call them both up, and I'll have Coach Lopez talk a little about them, Tristan Luhon and Richard Figueroa.
They finally got taller than me. With these two young men, they allowed us to finish fourth in the state as a team this year. We had a great year. They were both Division I champions, Central Section champions, and state champions. Tristan Luhon here ended up seventh in the nation. He ended up with a record of thirty-nine and three. Richard went unblemished, forty-two and oh, and was a California State Champion. It was his second title, so he's a two-time state champ, and he's the number-one ranked wrestler in the nation. Tristan's already verbal to Fresno State University and will wrestle for the Bulldogs. And Richard has verbal to ASU, will be a Sun Devil at Arizona State. And academically, they do outstanding, you know. I think Richard has a four-point-oh, and then we've got to work on Tristan's grade, but he's usually a four-point-oh also, but he said he's got a little lazy. But he'll work on those grades. I check them every month or so, so I'm on them. Also, I want to thank Randy and our administration at the school and the district for allowing us to do what we do. We do travel the nation at certain events. We get the full backing of the district. You know, we're trying to teach our kids about education and different things like that, time management. And my main thing at the school and the coaching is our character, how we hold ourselves at tournaments and events, because when we put our uniforms on it, we don't put our names on our back.
Club.
It says Selma Wrestling, so we want to represent the city and be very proud of the community.
The unit director of the Boys and Girls Club recently received the distinction. Well, I'll let Councilman Avalos take it from here.
And thanks for everything you guys do, for supporting our programs, boys and girls.
Thank you, thank you. Mark, can you bring your group over here, Mark, from the Boys and Girls Club?
We've had a wonderful girls' program also, so thank you, Selma, for everything you have done for us.
Trying to get through the crowd here. Got to fight the basketball and the wrestling group to get out the door. I'll give you, as they're coming up here, Mark and the group, the Boys and Girls Club here, I got to give credit to Mark. You know, I'm, Mark, come over here, Mark. Don't hide in the corner down there. Okay, this is a special, this is another special award for the Boys and Girls Club in this, in our community. And Mark is well-deserved, plus his staff, okay? Nate and Alicia are his staff members. Where are your staff members at?
Angelica.
Oh, Angelica, okay, there they are, in the corner there, okay. Yeah, these people right here, I'll read it here. The Mark and the group here, this is a special dedication to the Boys and Girls Club, supporting the youth of Selma, great appreciative. Our community is very proud to ever making a positive change in our community. Since Mark has been here in our community with the Boys and Girls Club, see these kids, when he first started out, he had a small group. Look at them now. They're getting bigger and bigger. I think, how many people you have now, about?
Average, we do an average of anywhere from twenty to forty children on a day. That's ranging from six-years-old all the way up to, I'm looking around, about fifteen right now, fifteen-years-old. We do have some, some club members that are juniors and seniors, but due to their schedule, they come maybe once a week, twice a week. They check in with the club, see what's going on, do their homework in the computer lab, and bye, Mark, bye, Angelica, bye, Nate, we'll see you next week, so.
And he does take them on an outings. Explain your outings that you take them out to, Mark.
So we attended Great America Winterfest in December, along with a Secret Santa shopping that some of the club members have never did a Secret Santa shopping, let alone attend Great America down in Santa Clara. So we took, what is it, about a four-and-a-half-hour drive, bus drive, from here to Santa Clara. Most of the club members have never been away from their parents just for the day, let alone, Jackie, where are you, Jackie? Jackie is seven-years-old, along with her sister Marina. So Jackie's one of the youngest. She is eight. She attended Great America, along with myself and the staff and some parent volunteers. So we try to teach them the good things, yes ma'am, no sir, thank you, please, be respectful. Isaiah, Isaiah has, is one of them that has gone through some changes. You have Mariah. Mariah had, came to us at the Boys and Girls Club. I'm going to say on the bad side, but now she's on the right path. She's been attending the club. You have Daisy and Lupe, two sisters. They've attended the club since day one, since we opened up. They were, some of the members that just started coming to the club when we opened, now they attend the club. You have Marina, who came to the club when she was six. She's going to be ten. Her grandmother lives down the street from the Boys and Girls Club. I've had conversations with her grandmother, and her grandmother says she would rather be at the club with you and your staff. So, and one thing about Marina that I share with her, we have the same birthday, so it's, it even drew, drew me closer to her, and not just to her, but all these ladies and gentlemen, young ladies and gentlemen up here, I'm very close to them. So is the staff. The staff is very close to them. We, we just try to teach them the right things, and most of all, we give them a place just to be a kid, just to come and be a kid. It doesn't matter where you are in Selma, we take everybody, and...
Thank you, Mark. Nathan, we have a present presentation of your staff here. You know, you're, hey, you guys are part of the team. Without, without, without you guys, it doesn't work here in our community.
Can anybody get in the center a little bit? Squish, squish towards the center. Get a picture. Council, we shall stand up.
Yeah, I'll stand up here. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mark, for being part of our community. Thank you. You leave here anyhow, it's your residence now.
All right, yeah, one more. Did you want to recognize your assistants?
Sure. So before we go, I'd like to acknowledge my staff, along with the children. I'm probably going to destroy his last name. Nate Zaina is my program assistant, so he makes sure all the kids are doing their stuff. Angelica Chavez, my program director, so she is in charge of Nate and also runs the And myself. So one thing I'd like to tell everybody is, we take membership throughout the year. We will be celebrating, in a matter of twenty-eight days, we'll be celebrating our third-year anniversary. April the eleventh, we are hosting an open house. If you have children, we are located at the Salazar Center. It's five dollars for the year. Depending on your location, it may, it may be a dollar for the year. Feel free to come by. You can see the kids in action, what they're doing, how they do their stuff, their programs. We offer computer lab, we offer sports and fitness, lifestyle skills, healthy lifestyle skills, leadership programs. I can stand up here and talk about the kids and myself and the staff all day. They'd probably have to do another city council meeting, continue tomorrow, but thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Mark's very humble. He received the Unit Director of the Year distinction from the Selma Boys and Girls Club, and I remember that speech he talked about it last year, from one of their, one of their members who was on the wrong track, who was sent to the Boys and Girls Club and got on the right track and helped change other, other people's lives, which is really important. And I also remember the really scary story. Mark comes to the council all the time to give us an update on what's going on, to invite us to events, and he said at one point, they were out there playing, and a car full of young men pulled up with bandanas on, and they jumped out, and everybody had to hit the deck, and they had to go into evacuation mode. It was very scary. It was a very scary moment, not knowing what these young men had just done or what they were planning to do. And it just underscores the fact that you wonder how they might have turned out if they went to the Boys and Girls Club when they were younger. That's what they're doing. They're changing lives. It's there to change lives and to affect kids for the better, and to turn kids into, into good citizens, and so that they could cover situations like this and to become Unit Directors of the Year themselves. With that, we'll move on to oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for further review. Members of the public are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes. Welcome.
Jennifer Earl, thirteen twenty-seven Peach. Mayor Robertson and council members, I want to let you know how much I appreciate each of you for being willing to serve on the city council. John and Sarah, I appreciate all the hard work you've done to get up to speed so that you can serve your constituents well. Jim, you fill the role of senior statesman, and you show your experience almost every meeting. Louis, I appreciate your passion for improving Selma through a better infrastructure. Scott, you're the master at networking in all kinds of city governments, and yet you still have time to appear at almost every local event. You're amazing. We all want Selma to be a productive, safe city. We all want to be proud to say, I'm from Selma. Selma is my hometown. So I would like to ask that we all be respectful of each other and discuss each item with civility. I would like all of us to do that. Can I ask all of you to do that, too? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and be heard?
Buenas noches, council, everybody. It's kind of difficult to follow that. I'll try to follow, follow her lead. My name's Frank Hernandez. Live at thirty-two oh-two Gold Ridge here in town. I don't know if this is the time or not, but I figure we'll just get it going. The last meeting, Mr. Avalos stopped the vote from moving forward with a bid that a lot of you were, you know, debating yea or nay, or stop it, go, don't, we need more time. And everybody, I had been speaking to a lot of people online, over the phone, in person, about a certain topic that was supposed to be on today's agenda, and I'm just wondering if we're going to hear about why it was removed from the agenda, and if Mr. Avalos's request to look into the legal ramifications with Scott Robertson, the mayor's request to rescind that topic, which is the police station. I was just wondering why it was removed from the agenda.
So it was removed for further review and for discussions with legal counsel on the legal issues raised at the last meeting. It will be back on the public agenda.
Okay, and also, you know, the town, there's a saying in Spanish, noveleros and chismosos, you know, people that bicker and talk, and, you know, a lot of people speak behind closed doors or behind computer screens or whatever, and scream and yell at their computer screens or at their phones about the police station, and we need more officers, and through the grapevine of that network of chismosos and, you know, whatever, however you want to call the grapevine of information in the city of Selma, we heard that it was your actions that brought in outside help from other local agencies to help out with the tragedies of this weekend, and I would just like to say thank you. Scott, mayor.
Thank you, but, but no. I'm one of five, and we're, we're a group, and we advise, and we're here, all here, with the best intentions towards our citizens, whether how we express them. I certainly was very, very concerned by the events, and, you know, I've been on long enough not to have a governor on my, on my, on my mouth. So I, you know, I'm definitely vocal about advocating for public safety for everybody in the city. So I thank you for that, but it was certainly not me. It was a concerted effort, goes through the city manager, and certainly through the police department.
Well, for whatever and whoever made that happen, I'm sure the citizens of Selma noticed. They noticed. You know, it was, it was out there. Everybody was talking and, you know. Well, on that note, just thank you.
Thank you.
Two-three-seven-six, Sierra View Street, Angel. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I'd like to thank Sergeant Gilbert Cantu, Officer Andrew Guzman, Officer Matt Hughes, Rosemary Allen Nice, Mr. and Mrs. Avalos, and Mr. and Mrs. Robertson for being a part of our Neighborhood Watch meeting last October. I recognize it's been several months since we last met, but I wanted to see how things develop before I would follow up. Since then, progress has been made, but there is still work that needs to be done. Neighborhood watch, excuse me, neighborhood communication is stronger amongst families in our neighborhood. Units are patrolling the neighborhood more often. Public Works came out to the neighborhood to replace a damaged, excuse me, to replace damaged Neighborhood Watch signage and repaired a damaged fence. The results were very, very good. When you drive in the night, there's a big reflective sign now showing a Neighborhood Watch guy, and it just feels a little bit more safer in that regard. Unfortunately, a truck hauling a tractor backed up into the fence today. The individual notified the city about it earlier today. I will follow up with Sylvia Luna, Public Works Administrative Assistant, via email to see what develops. She has been very helpful through past email exchanges regarding our Neighborhood Watch goals. Our neighborhood will be holding a meeting soon, so I will be inviting council members to attend to see what date is compatible.
Thank you.
2376 Sierra View Street, Angel. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I'd like to thank Sergeant Gilbert Cantu, Officer Andrew Guzman, Officer Matt Hughes, Rosemary Allen Nice, Mr. and Mrs. Avalos, and Mr. and Mrs. Robertson for being a part of our Neighborhood Watch meeting last October. I recognize it's been several months since we last met, but I wanted to see how things develop before I would follow up. Since then, progress has been made, but there is still work that needs to be done. Neighborhood watch, excuse me, neighborhood communication is stronger amongst families in our neighborhood. Units are patrolling the neighborhood more often. Public Works came out to the neighborhood to replace damaged Neighborhood Watch signage and repaired a damaged fence. The results were very, very good. When you drive in the night, there's a big reflective sign now showing a Neighborhood Watch guy, and it just feels a little bit more safer in that regard. Unfortunately, a truck hauling a tractor backed up into the fence today. The individual notified the city about it earlier today. I will follow up with Sylvia Luna, Public Works Administrative Assistant, via email to see what develops. She has been very helpful through past email exchanges regarding our Neighborhood Watch goals. Our neighborhood will be holding a meeting soon, so I will be inviting council members to attend to see what date is compatible with your schedules. It means a lot to the people because it shows that you care. So be on the lookout for that.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward and be heard?
Yolanda Torres, 2266 Mitchell Avenue. Well, the special presentation should definitely show us why council and the community needs to shift their priorities. We have had a bad thing happen this weekend, once again, in our community, where lives were lost, and families are going through devastation. So I think right now, we need to focus on that, focus on what we're gonna do, what plan of action we're going to have to keep our streets safe, to help our officers that we currently have on the streets now. Last week, I know we talked about the police department and all of this other stuff, and I want to thank you, Jim, for putting, having the guts to stop it, at least for now. It was pretty sad when I found out that the only bid we had was not even from a contracting company, it was from an environmental company who doesn't even have the bond, the insurance, the experience, let alone to build a shed, build a police department. They're not even a construction company. So we are back at square one. I don't know if a lot of people know that, but they are not a contracting company, they are an environmental, they remove mold and asbestos from buildings, and that's the just of it. I've looked into it, so I was really disappointed when I heard that, to know that last week, we were getting pushed to a yes vote, which could have taken us in a bad direction. So with that said, I just want to say that I hope we can shift our priorities for now and try to make our community safer. I'm just really, you know, I actually want to, and if I can, now this is not anything bad, I just really want to make everybody understand what our current officers are dealing with right now. If you guys look at this, and I think, I don't know where I need to be, but anyway, this is what our officers deal with, if you guys can see. If you look at, these are four officers per beat. If you look at number one, that is for one officer to cover that whole area. Okay? Number two, that's the second officer on this beat, to cover that entire area. And three and four, okay? This is impossible. This is what they're working with right now, okay? And this is why we need help. This is why we need outside agencies, this is why we need magic, this is why we need to have our officers that are not on shift come in and pay overtime. If we have $3 million that they wanted to take to put on a building, let's use that money for public safety. Let's use that money for... Now, that is one of them. That is beat what? Beat, okay, this is when we have four officers on beat. When we have three officers on beat, which is sometimes, is pretty much, most of the time, this is what they need to cover in the city. Okay? This is what the officers need to cover, and I'm gonna show you all, too, you probably already know. This is what they need to cover. This is impossible. This is why we need help. So if we have, or we can use, any of that money that we were gonna use towards this building, I'm asking you to please try to find a way to use some of that money, because it's our taxpayers' money, so I'm sure we are gonna be okay with getting that used to save lives. This is what I'm talking about, and this is very disturbing to me. So I just want to let everybody know, because when you see visually what our officers are dealing with, then you may understand. It's almost impossible for them to do their job and do it safely. And then they're working overtime, it's impossible. But thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward and make a comment? Okay, with that...
Hi, my name is Paula Rogers, I live on Mill Street. Because as the officer mentioned earlier, sometimes there's chismos, so I don't want my address broadcasted all over the place. But I have to say, this really hasn't been a lot of chismosos this time, so I would have to disagree with you only to the fact that there's been serious harm done this past week, as there has been in the past. And I think the chief and everyone can agree that something has to get done. I'm not telling you guys what to do, because I'm not in your seat, but I am up here again to plead on behalf of the people, the citizens of Salma, do something. I mean, we have the resources out there, I've worked in Fresno County for years before I recently retired, and we do have magic, we do have all these other resources out there to us, and if we're not utilizing them, then we're not doing our job. I'm not trying to put you guys down, but we have resources that we're not fully exhausting, just like Yolanda just mentioned. And as far as allocating our funds into the jail or the new buildings, let's really explore everything. There's contractors out there that maybe will give you a better deal than what you guys have, but there's no way that, I'm convinced that we need an eight, nine, eleven, ten, whatever million-dollar building we're supposed to get, but I do know that if that was my child or your child, there would be no dollar amount you could put on the value of their life. So, we need to take care of our citizens, and that needs to be a top priority. I do believe we need a new building, I may not be in agreement with everyone, we need a new building, but we don't need the Taj Mahal. We need a building that can do its job for our officers, so they can do their job, we need to get them support. You guys were elected to do your jobs, so I just want to say, you guys, we need to do it, and we need to work together to find something that works for all of us and keeps people safe, because we should not have shootings going on at any time. Now they're getting so bold as to do them in the daytime. I mean, I'm appalled at how worldly this place has gotten. People need Jesus in their life, they don't know it, but we need Him, and we need to pray every day and every night that God steps in and enlightens us, so we can do our part to help everybody else be safe. Thank you.
Good evening, how are we doing? Thank you guys for your service and appreciate the concern, and I look at it as a positive way, you know. We have some citizens in Salma that care about their city. And on that note, I'd like to invite some of you guys, there's some programs that we're trying to create right now, because I'm a doer, and I know that some of you guys, not all of you guys, I've seen you guys in our programs that we're doing here in Salma, and we're making the difference. You know, with the tragedy that's happening in Salma, I think that we have the solution, and that's Christ. Jesus is the answer for, you know, for all of these problems that are happening with drugs, gangs, and all this stuff that's going on right now. And what we're trying to work on right now is a program to take advantage of the second chance opportunity that our president has released funds for, you know, for those guys that are coming out of prison. I'm actually putting my ranch, making my ranch, and looking into it to make it a safe, a halfway house, where I can get 10 prisoners, so they can come in and live in my ranch, 13 acres, and we can house them. And we can do something to make it better, because these guys are coming home somewhere. It might not be your family member, it might not be you guys' relatives, but you know what? They're human beings, and they need help, and we gotta give them a vocation. And I'm willing to do that, and my family's willing to do that, and my wife's an awesome woman, because she lived with me coming in, I was 17 years in prison, and she never gave up on me, so she says, "Well, honey, if that's what you want to do, you know, we're not gonna farm no more, we're not gonna look for our revenue no more, we're gonna look to change lives." And so, I asked some of you guys to come alongside us and help us. You know, we can blame the officials, we can blame everybody, but that's not gonna resolve the problem. We have to get our hands dirty, we have to go out there and love these folks. In my church, we just, you know, we just had an audience of pure homeless individuals, and we get to feed them, we get to love with them, we get to pray with them, and I just love it, because I know some of these people are gonna be transformed and become productive citizens of Salma, but most importantly, they're gonna live with me in eternity in heaven. God bless you guys, and let's go forward in a positive way.
Anybody else tonight?
1057 Mill Street. I just want to say, all I've been watching is the news about Salma, and of course, it's negative. Also today, they announced for the Fresno PD substation being built for $6.5 million. Do we need to help you guys with a couple plans? I hope you guys have some plans before trying to shove another $3 million down your throats without doing some background search on everything. A former council member mentioned, "Why don't you guys go with some substations?" You know, build something in your means that's an $8 million building, that is in the means of the $8 million. And then consider some substations later on. Here we got, excuse me, the Captain Peterson that wants to put a hold and make sure he dots his i's and crosses his t's and make sure he's not gonna be in this mess with his buildings. You know, I applaud him for that, and many other citizens do as well, and I'm sure a lot of your employees here at the city of Salma do as well, and not make a $15 million mistake, or possibly more, if they just leave the job undone. Please get educated. I don't think anybody here is well-educated in the construction world. Please get educated, all of you, and come up with some plans for us. Wait till, see if we get the grants in June. What is so wrong? Where were all those other people who are demanding to put up the building now? Put it up now. Well, where were you three years ago? Where were you two years ago? Where were you a year ago? We want a town, and we are citizens, and we have every right to feel safe, and we want more officers on the ground. Please get us more agencies, more officers, and not because many kids are dying, or citizens are dying on the street, because we deserve it, and Salma deserves better. It's time to move forward for the betterment of our community. Please educate yourselves in this construction. Thank you.
Anyone else?
As citizens and taxpayers, do we have the right to hire our own attorney to look into the finances? Because I just got a text from a business owner in town that wants to donate $2,500 and start our own fund to hire an attorney to look into either helping you or looking into where we can get money for officers. So I'm just asking if that's something that we as citizens and taxpayers have the right to do?
Boy, I think you have the right as citizens to organize under the First Amendment, and those rights are very broad.
Okay.
I mean, I think that would include any outside agencies or professional services that you would use to help you clarify that. I'm not aware of the city actually funding the attorneys...
No, we're not, they're not, we're not asking them to fund. We're, we have donations, people are, and the citizens, our community, the businesses are telling me that they are willing to donate just to, that they are willing to donate into a fund, so we can, as citizens, they can represent us to find out where we can get money to get help, so we don't have this continue to happen in our community.
City Attorney, are you aware of any provisions preventing citizens from mobilizing and hiring an attorney to look into city issues that affect the public?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm not aware of anything. As the mayor indicated, there are First Amendment rights that citizens have, and the city cooperates and supports those First Amendment rights.
Thank you.
Okay, well, then I think that's the road we're gonna take, so just so we know. We are serious, we need change, and if we need to step up and do it ourselves to fund it, that's what we're gonna do. But I already have a $2,500 donation, and thank you to that business here in city Salma.
Thank you. Ma'am, we have someone else who's gonna speak?
Hello, San Morales, 3624 Wright Street. Been born and raised in this town, and, you know, I myself am a survivor of gun violence. Back in 1985, I took two bullets in the back of my head. I was at the wrong place at the wrong time. I was not even a block away, I was right by Johnson Tires, which is right next by the PD. Back then, you know, the detectives were on top of it that quick. Within a day or so, they were able to catch the guy that shot me and two other people. You know, so I know firsthand how it is, you know, to be a victim. You know, we come over here, and people will get mad at you guys, the city officials will get mad at Chief Gardner, you know, people start pointing fingers. Well, the thing is, I think as a community now, we have to figure something out to make things better. You know, more police officers, I understand that, but, you know, just recently, these kids that have been lost, it's terrible. Myself, a really good friend of mine that was really close to me, young man, Joseph Oskis, here from Salma, was murdered, you know, and it's just, it's too close, it's just too close to me, you know? Now it's knocking at my door, you know, and it hurts, too, to see the young kids that are dying. I myself was, everybody knows me in town, nobody messes with me, everybody respects me. Now, violence is at my door, I mean, you know, things that happen, I've had to deal with. I pulled out a guy out of my car that was, that broke into my car. I pulled him out, and, yeah, I beat him. I held him down, PD came down, and, you know, Salma PD, you know, a lot of people complain, whatever, but you know what? They were there in a timely manner. The thing was, though, is that they turned to me and asked me, "What do you want us to do?" I was like, "Wow, you know what? Because of the fact that he didn't steal the car, there was no damage, basically it was a slap on the hand for this guy." You know? And I said, I said, "Well, you know, next time this ever happens, I'm not gonna say anything, I'll take him out to the country, I'll take care of this guy." You know, I was angered, and he turns around, officer tells me, goes, "Well, that's assault, you could go to jail for that." And I said, "Well, maybe I'll just keep my mouth shut." You know, but it's not the right thing to do. The thing is, we understand that Chief Gardner, you know, whatever he's doing to make things better, well, it's one of those deals that when you hear the citizens, you know, talking bad about him, you know, it's, kind of doesn't work right, you know? But my question is, as a citizen, what can we do to help this, to make things better? What can we do? You know, can we help the PD? What can we do? I know they have Neighborhood Watches, but what is the Neighborhood Watch gonna do? I'm gonna watch a guy, you know, do this, do that, I'm gonna call the PD. By the time the PD gets there, these guys are gone. A lot of people that I know, and I myself, are a man of action, you know, I'm gonna take, I guess, the law into my own hands, which is, I guess, a bad thing to do, but, you know, we gotta do something. So, you know, that's why, I don't know what else to say.
Thank you, thank you for expressing your frustration.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you have a physical impairment that would require you to speak from there?
Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
What's your name?
My name's Joey Cano, I live in Salma Mobile State. I happen to be the manager of Salma Mobile State, while considering that homes in my home park. I don't know, none of you guys are around where I live in there. I've lived in Salma most of my life, I've lived in that park for about 30 years. 10, 12 years ago, I could walk my dogs down Stillman Street, 10 o'clock, 10:30 at night, and not be scared. Do you think I'd get the heck out of that park now when it's dark? No, 'cause it's dangerous on Stillman Street. And then in our park where we live, we hear gunshots go off all the time. The Fourth of July in New Year's Eve, nobody goes out of our homes in Salma Mobile State. All the guns are going off. All the guns are going off. Now, I don't know what has happened here. I lived here a long time and our City of Selma's just gotten crappy. You just drive around and look at the City of Selma, all the cars parked in yards, homes that look like crap, and then you've got all this violence going on? Nobody's looking or caring about it. I happen to. I have little elderly ladies in the park that'll call me at night and scared of their hearing noises. Now, the police department, I think, does try to come through our park. Now, one officer did come in one day and talk to me and asked me how it was going. I said, well, as far as I know, it is going okay in our park. But at night, I'm sixty-nine, I go home, go to bed at eight o'clock. I don't roam around the golf cart in our park anymore. I don't know what's gonna be roaming through our mobile home park in Lawrence, Selma. So, it's just turned into a crappy place to be. It's very embarrassing. This used to be a nice farming community. All farmers, all good people. I know a lot of these women in here. My family are farmers here. And I don't know, you guys up there, do you realize how we all feel? This is just a crappy place to live anymore. And a lot of people can't go anywhere. Like, I have elderly residents in the park, they live on Social Security. They can't leave Selma. They don't go out at night anymore either. So, something really has to be done. We're all intelligent adult people. We're not ignorant. Selma's not an ignorant place to live. What is the problem with somebody figuring it out? You know?
Thank you, Joy.
Now, I care about people in Selma and I care about my residents in the mobile home park. And then I can't even walk down the sidewalk at night anymore? That's spooky. You don't wanna walk and thinking you get shot in the head or something? I'm scared even to go to save my grocery store, Walmart, Rite Aid. You don't know after dark what the hell's out of here? Well, stay home. Now, I think it's up to the city officials of Selma and the chief of police to straighten out our town.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward and be heard?
Hi, good evening. I'm Marissa Caseras, twelve thirty-four Hick Street. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, I just came to listen. And I kind of have a different objective about this. It's, I'm gonna go a little bit different way here. For the past six months, my daughter's been getting bullied at the junior high. And to me, it feels like everybody's complaining because of what all the adults and the kids are doing around town. But it starts with the kids when they're younger. There's no accountability anymore. The kids get in trouble at school, they slap their hand, um, they go on their business. And, you know, my daughter getting bullied for six months and her attitude has changed. She's very defensive. It's awful. Hundred and nineteen suspensions and the school year's not even over yet. And last week, I emailed all of you and the only one that responded was Mr. Robertson, which I appreciate because I honestly feel that the city, the police and the school, they all need to get together. The city's so, um, you guys are all worried about the police station. The school's all worried about the stadium. But you're not gonna have any kids if they're all suspended to fill that stadium. They're all suspended. They're all getting in trouble. And I really feel like all of you need to get together and the whole town needs to come together because everybody's here, got a group here, got a group there. And nobody's working together anymore. And those kids that are getting in trouble at the school, they're out and about in the city in the middle of the night. Those are the peo, those are the kids that are causing the violence or, you know, driving around with little gangsters. All these, you know, they're trying to find themselves in junior high and I get that, you know? But I feel like if everybody got together and worked on it at a younger age, I think there'd be a little bit less crime. It does start at home. The parents do need to work on it, work on it at home. And I'm on my kids constantly. Uh, you can call me and nag, you can call me whatever you want. I know where my kids are at. I know who they're with and I know what time they're gonna be home. That's just the kind of mom I am. And I'm very proactive. I do volunteer a lot in the city. I've done a lot for the kids. I even helped Measure O, trying to get that stadium with my kids in football. But like I said, you're not gonna have the kid, the kids are leaving the city. The kids are leaving 'cause they don't wanna be bullied. And then, I hate to say this, I know I'm gonna get crap for it, but I'm Mexican, but I make good money. And you bring low-income housing in, you're gonna get low-income people. And then you get the low-income stores. I don't shop in Selma anymore. I shop, I go to Hanford. I don't, I wanna spend my money in nice places and I wanna buy nice things for my home. And I have, and we all have to get cameras now, you know, for our doors and everything. But anyways, I just think everybody needs to work together. And I think it starts with the younger kids and I hope that all of you read my email that I sent. I know it was kinda long, but I hope that you read it. And I, I do feel like it needs to, it needs to come together. The town needs to come together and everybody needs to work a little bit at it and, and, um, get some programs or something for the school. 'Cause that's, that's where it starts. The kids are fighting way too much, too many fights at the school. And it, it, it needs to, something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thanks, Marissa.
Hello, I'm Rosemary Allen East, twenty-five sixty-five Almond Street. I've had gangs in my neighborhood. I've had shootings. Mayor Scott Robertson and the chief took care of all that. Our neighborhood is so quiet, it's eerie. Just to walk to the mailbox, you're, you keep looking behind your back, but it's wonderful. Neighborhood watch does work. It does work, but we have to be vigilant and we have to make sure that we communicate and not just come to these meetings and complain about everything, but go home and do nothing. It's all of us, it's community. Ten o'clock, do you know where your kids are? Yeah, mine are at home, where, where's everybody else? Where are the parents? Why aren't the parents being held accountable for these kids out in the streets? What about, nobody's asked the question I've been asking for a while. What about the people who are renting to the gang member families? Where are those people? Why are they renting to those people who are, are gang banging, having parties, stuff like that? Scott Robertson, Mayor Scott and the chief got those people out of our neighborhood. They now, they now live in Colorado. Go do your gang banging over there. But unless we report stuff, call, call, call the police. Call if you see a car that looks funny. Call if you hear something weird. It doesn't matter, call over flood, their switchboard. So when they see you, I, I mean, my phone says Mama Bear on there. When they see Mama Bear, they're probably like, God, I can't stand what she calls. I'm sick of her calling about the trailer parked on her street because that's my investment. I don't wanna see a trailer, a tractor with a long trailer parked outside my house. Go do that on the rich country curb lane. I bet you they won't do that. They're not gonna do that, but they'll do it in our neighborhood because people are apathetic. They don't call, they don't care. They're gonna tear up our roads. But you guys, we've gotta work together. It's not just the city council, it's not just the police department. It's our responsibility, all of us. They're, yeah, but they're, they're, we don't have, they should be everywhere. Everywhere. And we all have to work together, not just continue to blame city council, not just continue to blame the police department or whatever. Yes, we need to hire more police officers. Yeah, we need to do that. No to the police station and use that money to hire more police officers.
Sir, sir, come, come forward and be recognized if you're gonna speak. Then don't talk. Come forward or don't talk, please. Okay, all right, thank you, Ann Carr. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Oh, and I'd like to thank everybody for your input tonight. It's heartfelt. And you know, you, we've heard tonight about the problems with the streets and about the city. But I'll tell you what we don't have a problem with and that's our people, our citizens. And that's what it should be about in our city. People, not things, not infrastructure. Infrastructure's second, people first, all of you, and we're part of you too. We're all in this together. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion. By roll call vote, for purposes of discussion, any council member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and placed back on the regular agenda. For purposes of discussion, any council member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and placed back on the regular agenda. Does anyone have anything on the consent calendar they would like to take off tonight? Check register? Is there a motion to approve item one A?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Aye.
Count, uh, Mayor Protem Franco?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye. Councilmember Guerra?
Okay, just a couple of things on the register. Check number seven-two-three-nine-four, Datapath LLC. It says Net Care On-Site Support, March two thousand nineteen for ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-two. Can you explain that? What is that?
That's our contracted tech support. They manage our server systems and securities and things of that nature. And they also, uh, we have a, a staff that comes in from them and they're here da, daily, Monday through Friday.
Tech support?
Correct.
And then check number seven-two-three-nine-seven. And that's to DSJ Architects for the new police station agreement. What did we agree on?
That's the architect for the whole station itself. That's the full agreement, the full contract.
But are we still?
We're still paying for whatever services they're performing.
Okay. And that says Fresno County Tax Collector for second install, three thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars. What is that for?
So that's the property tax payments. What it is, is the city doesn't necessarily pay property taxes for its individual properties. There are cer, circumstances that differ from that. But what this is, is SKF actually collects their billing through the, through this billing section. So that's what you're paying for, sewer.
Okay, that's it for me.
Anybody else have any items? I would ask, what, um, seven-two-three-eight-zero, I know it's a small item. Fitness equipment, where's that?
It's repairs and maintenance for the fitness equipment at the fire stations.
Fire station, okay. And then Datapath LLC, seven-two-three-nine-four. We just talked about that. Net Care On-Site Support, that's...
Yeah, it's our tech support.
Okay, that's the tech support. Then on the next page, Tyler Technologies at the bottom, seven-two-four-five-three. Annual maintenance agreement and Execute Time Advanced Scheduling, what's that?
Uh, Execute Time Advanced Scheduling is a new software that we're, we're putting in place for our timekeeping management for payroll.
So that's how people log in and out?
Clock in and out and they can check their, their hours for, that are available.
Is that a full amount for the time card?
We're still working through the process, it's not done yet.
That's like a down payment?
It's just an a, a monthly payment that we're paying for it. We're going through the services, they're billing us on hours and structure as we go through the agreement.
So when this system gets fully implemented, it won't be five thousand anymore?
That's correct. You'd only be paying annual licensing fees.
License and maintenance agreement? Does that include upgrades too?
No. I mean, they do upgrades on their own periodically for maintenance and things of that nature. So that's part of the maintenance package itself.
Reading the paper, I see that we're going from four G to five G. Is there anything in the city that we're gonna need to ramp up in terms of our technology, which will be a cost driver, to keep up with the technological improvements in bandwidth?
That'll come back more to our maintenance of our server systems and things of that nature to keep up with the software. 'Cause as the software developers, uh, develops and gets more expensive and also more aggressive, it takes more speed, so we address it on the server end for that component.
Is that part of the agreement with Datapath?
If, they manage it in that sense. They also manage our agreements as far as when we need to start rolling out new, new softwares or new securities, new firewalls and things of that nature.
They, they keep us surprised of new internet security protection and cyber protection for social engineering and wire transfer fraud.
That's correct.
Okay. Speaking of wire trans, this is my last one. Page eight, wire transfers. It says it's a wire transfer of fifteen grand for the Selma redevelopment loan. What, what's, what's that for?
That's our one, our ninety-four bond. It's just an interest payment only.
So that's a nineteen ninety-four bond?
It's paid via this accessory agency.
Okay, that's what I had a question, 'cause everything is paid out of this accessory agency now, right? For the RDA obligations?
That's correct.
Okay, with that, I make a motion to approve item one B. Is there a second? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Councilmember Avalos?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Franco?
Aye.
Okay, since item two was taken off the agenda, we'll move directly to departmental reports. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. And as you mentioned earlier, we did move the police station agenda, item two, uh, future agenda so that we can do a, a final review check. There was a internal miscommunication and we need to take a double check on references and charity bond, so thank you.
And that will be back on the next agenda, the agenda after that.
Correct. So, we will have that on one of the next agendas. Also, on another item, um, to catch up on past work that was not done, the city has submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development the city annual housing progress reports for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. We're currently working on the two thousand eighteen annual report. The forms are much more complicated and longer for two thousand eighteen. The state has changed those forms. But we are catching up on these reports and this is one of the requirements to come back into housing compliance with the state. So that's one, one component and some good news on those reports getting in. On April fifteenth, the staff report for the consulting firm to assist the city with the housing element compliance will be brought forward to council as well. We've participated in several meetings to move projects forward and, uh, as we've discussed before, having a full-time planning manager will greatly assist in increasing our ability to do that. So that position is now out for recruitment, the planning manager, and it closes on April twelfth. The city has received five proposals for on-call planning services and we're, we have a review committee that will look through those this week and bring back recommendations to council as well. Staff is beginning preparations for the annual ICSC Retail Recruitment Convention in May. And attending, uh, we have two council members attending, Councilmember Franco and Councilmember Trujillo, as well as myself and Assistant City Manager. So we are looking at canceling the, the meeting of May twentieth, if that will work with council. So I just wanted to kinda let you all know.
So we'll have no city manager and we won't have two council members here? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And, and last year, we had a couple of council members go, I understand, with the Assistant City Manager. So, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem went last year. And that was a, kind of a precedent set of canceling the meeting. I just wanna run that by you to make sure you wanna do that this year as well?
What does council think?
Yeah, in the past, in the past, if there was nothing pressing, of urgency, that we canceled, when you and Jim went last year, we had a quorum, but because there was nothing that was time-sensitive.
We delayed it.
We delayed it.
Council members, okay, with, with, with canceling that meeting? Unless there's an emergency. There's an emergency, we have a quorum to get together. You never know. Okay, so we'll cancel it unless there's an emergency.
Thank you very much. And then, um, Form seven hundreds are due, I think, tomorrow. So just a reminder to council members and commissioners to get their Form seven hundreds in. And we do also have a proposal for the redistricting termography services. So we're, um, we were expecting one more, but if I don't receive that in the next few days, we'll bring forward what we do have for your consideration.
Great, so that'll be the next meeting, for sure, districting.
We, we can bring that forward.
We've been talking about it a while and every time we don't do anything, I just get concerned about that, about that thirty thousand dollar letter.
Yes, exactly.
All right, and with that, or is that conclusion?
Yeah, thank you.
City Attorney Sparks Rojas? Thank you. Thank you. Um, Department of Finance?
Thank you. Um, one thing I do like to report, we are looking at April twenty-second through the twenty-fourth to have our first budget workshop for the fiscal year nineteen twenty. So you guys can please check your calendars and.
Say the date again?
April twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, one of those days within there, we'd be looking to have.
Is council good with the morning for that again?
I think we'd open up with a question to everybody, yeah.
So it would be three weeks from today, tomorrow, or three weeks from the next day?
Correct.
Okay, and would council want a nine, another nine o'clock start?
Yeah.
That'd be good?
That'd be good.
Okay. And how much time would we be budgeting, pardon the pun, for that meeting?
I would've bu- budget probably minimum two hours.
Two hours, okay.
Oh, Isaac, I have a question. Are we gonna, are we gonna go through, um, department by department or are you gonna break down? Will you pre- will you, uh, previously send us information so we can?
Yes, I'll send you a, a workbook. We'll go, go through the whole departments and we'll sit down and discuss the whole thing. We'll also discuss some of the things that were brought up, um, during our financial presentation, like policies and things of that nature as well at that time. And we'll also be looking at forecasts for pension, revenues and expenditures for multiple years.
Will the pol- we'll be talking about the policies there or will we be transferring them over and eventually?
We'll, we'll start the conversation at that point. Um, if we were looking to adopt the policy, then it'd have to come to council meeting to be doing, so.
Okay, um, I think Sunday we may have something at the Gurdwata, maybe Tuesday. Is everybody good with the twenty-second of April at nine, nine AM? Twenty-third would be the Tuesday, actually.
Twenty-third would be the second, right?
Twenty-third?
Or Tuesday.
Tuesday, April twenty-third, nine AM? For, is this a pre-budget meeting as well or are we going to, um, stick to what we discussed at the, at the audit meeting?
This is our pre-budget meeting.
Okay.
Isaac, is it including more staffing?
We're gonna go through the full budget, whether it's staffing levels, um, cost increase, we'll be going through the whole thing.
Is this where we request what we're looking for, for the budget, to see what gets included in the budget?
This is where we incorporate what we, visioning sessions, what we thought we heard from you, from, from the council as a whole. And we start talking about what, what's in that budget and we start having that conversation of what it looks like. So it's the pre-meeting for, for the full budget.
I don't wanna get too far off, you know, to do too much, but at the same time, I think we also need to have a workshop on how we stimulate and how we stimulate growth in the city in terms of credits and offsets and things that the other cities do. We have some serious potential here and I, we, I know we haven't done it in the recent past. And I, I can't remember when we've done it on the, on the council. We're getting to that stage economically where Selma's getting noticed. People are looking at Selma as a value and I think we need to encourage that. They're looking at Selma as, as a value despite the reality of Selma. They are also wanting to take a further look at Selma and we have to encourage them with the full picture. Of course, public safety is number one, but economics are also important. And so I'm just wondering if we could devote a little bit of that or do, does council think that's too much for that day? Or should we also discuss potential for economic, um, stim- stimulus?
I think, can I say?
Because I think we really need to help.
I think, I think when we're talking in the financial, when we're doing the financing, I think exactly what you're stating, I think doing our policies and structuring our policies, I think are actually adhering to some of the requests from the state and federal in order for us to give out to agencies credits. I think by, I think by us, yes, yes, by us doing our policies and how structuring our, structuring our finances and budgeting, I think we are able, we're, we're meeting some of that here, some of the concerns that they're asking for us to even apply for.
Like that community development finance initiative?
Yes.
I mean, that is a, it's a great tool and it's something that we could look in, in the context of the discussion of the, the budget and looking at how the policy for how, um, accounts are used and money in those accounts are used and transferred. So could you add that to the meeting agenda as well?
Maybe three hours, that's all right.
Whatever it takes. All right, so nine to eleven, Tuesday, April twenty-third. Thank you. Awesome. Okay, I have twenty-third, I have Tuesday, April twenty-third.
It's the twenty-third.
Okay. I think that was, that was me. Um, okay, with that, we'll move on to, um, Public Works.
Public Works, nothing to really report this time. Uh, business as usual, work, work, work.
Thank you. For doing a great job. Um, Fire. Sitting in for Chief Peterson, Captain Rusty.
All right, uh, yeah, I was invited by chief to come down. Uh, nothing, he didn't tell me anything to report. Uh, then he's, uh, out of the state. He's in Nebraska, Snyder's, Nebraska, looking at our new fire engine. So hopefully we should get that new engine within the next thirty to forty-five days. It should be complete. On that, that's all I got.
That's a good question. Thanks, baby. Okay, please, Chief Garner?
Careful. Uh, the next council meeting, just a reminder, we're gonna be swearing in a number of new officers on the fifteenth, which is I think our next council meeting, as well as some new dispatchers, so that'll be a good day for our department. Also, uh, the thirteenth of April marks the first of our Bringing Neighbors Together events for this calendar year. It'll be Saturday, the thirteenth, at between ten and two, eh, ten AM and two PM at Lincoln Park. You're all invited to join us. That's the first one of our season, so that's it.
Thank you. Parks and Community Services?
Just a, a quick reminder, uh, we talked about the community, April thirteenth is actually the cleanup day also. And so it's a community-wide cleanup day.
April thirteenth?
April thirteenth, Saturday, is part of the, um, cleanup, and Bob Allen will be chairing it. And so those interested, we are gonna be working hard, a big group of us at Pioneer Village for the, we've got some permission from Land O' Art to get rid of those Zoolander's and there's, uh, two encampments and to thank Javier, our code enforcement officer, already contacted the railroad. Uh, there's encampments across the street next to our tracks too, so we're working on that. We received a, a letter.
Good deal. Um, the, I had somebody come to me, actually, the, uh, Tony Valenzuela regarding the storage situation at, at Schaefer, in that storage building. They're looking for less than they had before, something like a hundred square feet. Could you find that for them? Could you find some room for them to put some Bandit's equipment? Because they're renting something right now. It's costing them like big money, thousand, eleven hundred bucks. Can they, uh, would it be possible to find some space for them? Can you look into that?
Uh, we'll work with them. They previously used our facility and they also talked about expanding the building with their costs and that has not happened.
Well, they did and then they went for funding to build something and it didn't, it didn't come through on that. So they don't need as much space apparently as before, but.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could, if you could work with Tony on that.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to council reports. Councilmember Trillo?
I attended a couple of events, but I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, push those over. I, I, I've received, uh, many emails from the community, many phone calls. And, um, just to, just to clarify, I was sworn in, uh, December eleventh and, uh, prior to the, to do that, prior to that, I had been doing my due diligence in regards to economic development to this community. And, um, during that time, I was, I was, um, also focusing on safety. And it was in regards to what the numbers were, it was in regards to how we can bring this to a permission. And doing that, I kinda have stumbled into something, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to present it to the council in the next meeting in some format, in regards to a, um, it's a community planning organization to reduce violence in our community. Uh, it's a four or five tier program. It's in regards to forming a coalition that, in regards to the community members, education, the school districts, and community members. This forum will be a task force and com- compromised, comprised of twenty-one regular members, from city council members to board members to local police, local residents. I think we need it. I think in regards to, to, to setting aside the fire department, I would like to entertain, Mr. Mayor, discussions in regards to planning a community planning program to reduce violence in this community. I would like to, um, I've been doing a lot of research and I think I'm almost gonna be ready to present it to the council.
Did you wanna make that a discussion, agenda item?
Yes, if it would be possible.
Calling for an agenda item.
And that would be a presentation that you would like to make or you would like to get with the police team?
I would like to make a presentation and I would have all my facts. I'm pretty, I, I've, uh, the last, the information I've been pulling is from the policing, uh, the police executive research forum. Yes. And I've, um, the information, I actually spoke to the individual. He's a, um, retired, um, fo- uh, John Colas. He's a professor, director of public safety initiatives. Uh, he's worked, he's retired from the Department of Criminal Justice. And, um, he has a format that he's been, a lot of communities and the overall nation have used. And I think that we could pick off some of this information and use our own and create our own. I think, um, aside of all the issues, um, I'd like to respond to, a lot of people told me, get educated, uh, do your research and, you know, in this city council, we're diverse. We got elected to do the best of our, for our community. We take the bad, the good. But I own businesses here. I love this community. Every day that I, the day I moved here, met my wife, I loved it. Now that I see people in my restaurant, I love it even more. My heart is here for this community. I spend a lot of money in this community. I ha- I employ a lot of people and I'm gonna do my research and I'm gonna bring it to the community. And this is my way. There's, it's really easy to express your opinion, good or bad, but it's really hard. That's, when you express your opinion, good or bad, you're actually, some people call it showboating, some people call it, uh, grandstanding. But when you do, when you cons- when you construct a policy or a committee to be proactive, I tell every resident that got on Facebook or anywhere or called me and said negative, these, negative things. If you take ten percent of that time that you used to put it out to be positive in our community, we'll be much better. I appreciate the negatives, the positives and the in-betweens, but I'm here to help the community and this is what I wanna propose. And if we can do as a community, as, as council, get it and work it and tread it, but build it amongst all of us, this also will call for us to go and have five community. We will go out to the community and have our community, different districts, come and tell us what their needs are. Not go into the, not to go to the, our, our, um, what do you call that, our center. We're gonna go to the commu- I would like for us to go to the communities individually and ask them to come and give us their concerns, cause it's their neighborhood. It's their neighborhood. We can win this, we can do this. And I'm just hoping that you can accept it to be put on the agenda. Let me present it. If you guys wanna change it around, do it, you know, you know, let's do it. It'll be the formation of our council.
Okay, well, any council member can request an agenda item, so that's what I'm hearing.
Oh, we could, okay, I would love to do that.
It'll be a discussion.
Thank you.
Item, right, thank you. Councilperson Garrett?
Okay, I just like to piggyback a little bit off of councilmember Trujillo. I also, I'm born and raised here in Selma and I have to say, for the past three years, I was with you. I sat out there and we were begging, crying. I mean, we wanted more police officers. I sit up here and I'm still going to be your voice and I know that we need more police officers. Coming home yesterday from a weekend, I come into town and we have police officers. We have patrol officers all over the place, which made it really nice after hearing everything that went on. I just don't feel that it has to take shootings and people's lives for us to have more patrol out there. I really would like to see that we have more patrol on our streets, so that way we can get our city back. It never used to be this way and I have to agree with most of you or all of you, that the city wasn't like this. Also, I was inundated with some calls and it's very sad to say that in the past three years, we've had eight homicides and none of them have been solved. We as a community need to do better and it starts with all of us. And people are gonna blame city council, blame us for everything, but it takes a whole community. And we need to work together. I'd like to ask a question. Do we have a gang task force officer in our department? Chief? We do? It's rotating, okay. Um, cause I'd like to see, you know, maybe that's gonna be, um, something we can work on. Chief, maybe getting not just a rotating, but help you with that? Maybe get two specialists or? We have someone there. Mm-hmm. Okay. Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. So with that, you know, we're gonna work really hard and I don't think that there's not one of us up here that don't value each and every one of you, your families, your children, because we all do, you know, we really care. So we're gonna work together and we're gonna do some good things, but it's gonna take all of us to work together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council, councilman Avalos?
Uh, yeah, I attended the, uh, back, the SKF, uh, meeting and, um, I'm asking for, uh, updates on our future. If there's gonna be, how much the increase is gonna take place here in Selma. Um, soon as, soon as they find out, they're gonna come to the city council and do a presentation. I requested that from SKF for the citizens, that way the ci-.
An update on them.
Update what's going on.
On the McCall?
And also the McCall, um, actually the McCall line is moving forward. Uh, it's closed off from, uh, Cam all the way to Canal, cause they're working on the road. You know, it is moving forward. Is it a year, it is a year project, okay? But they are actually ahead of their schedule, so everything is moving forward.
What's the completion date on that projected?
Hmm, well, it's supposed to be a year from now, so it's, but it's good, it's, they're ahead of schedule, okay? They're way ahead of their, uh, plans, so, uh, they haven't given a time. It depends how the, well, how it works down, how it works down the road with the farmers and everybody. But also, uh, as, the other issue too as well, um, some of the citizens requested, uh, you know, some, uh, how much is our, uh, our sewers gonna go up and, um, and also the, uh, water rates gonna go up and also actually our garbage. You know, the, there's been some, uh, concerns on some citizens, so, um, I'm hoping to look at some, some of those issues there so we can address some of those issues with the residents here coming up in the near future. And, uh, so far, uh, it, I like to see the people come out, voice their opinion, it's good. I like, you know, because they, they care about their community. I, I like that. Uh, i- it's, it's a positive thing and I, I, and I commend them, you know? And I, and I think, uh, and also today, it was a good event for the kids. The, uh, the, um, the kids came out. It shows in our community, we have good kids in our community, uh, quality kids, uh, you know, you, state champions, uh, wrestling, all the way down, uh, Boys and Girls Club. There's positive impacts in our community. They're, they're, they're moving forward in our community. I like what I see. It's slowly moving, but it's moving. But like other communities in life, they all have, they have all the issues themselves, you know? They're suffering from crime as well as we are. Uh, there's some issues in other communities that are probably just as bad as us. But, um, I'm not talking about Fresno, because Fresno's every day issue with them. Uh, but, uh, the, in our community, but it takes the people that live in the community to work, you know? The lady brought up the neighborhood watch program. It is working. Uh, she testified, it's working. I'd like to see more neighborhood watch programs in our community. Uh, know your neighbor. Like you said, know where your kids are at, uh, know who the kids are dealing with, uh, cause they're the future of our community. And, uh, and the school's doing very, I gotta give school credit. They're doing what they can to keep the, uh, the violence down in their schools and it's tough, you know, um, cause you know, you don't know what, and, and in giving day, what kid comes home, uh, go to school on a bad day or a good day, you know? You don't know who their friends are, so, uh, so the teachers have a tough job. I gotta give them, I, I commend the teachers out there, uh, for what they gotta do in their school, you know? But, but it's, it's all, it falls on. Uh, but, but it's, it's all, it falls on us, the citizens and our parents. Say, hey, we gotta know where our kids are at and take responsibility for our actions, you know? For the future of our kids, you know? Uh, I took responsibility, my kids were growing up, you know? I, I felt like I was the martial law, I wanna know where they're at all the time. But, um, even to the day, my own mother called me up eight o'clock at night, you know, I have a curfew at my age, at ten o'clock. You know? I mean, bless my mother, you know? If you don't believe me, test my wife, she'll tell you. Uh, but, uh, but, but overall, guys, the city of Selma, it's moving forward in the right direction. Slowly but surely, we are moving in the right direction. And I like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
You know, um, when we get elected up here, it's not like we all of a sudden leave the community and don't participate and don't live in the same neighborhoods that you do. And don't share the same frustrations. You know, a lot of what was said earlier today, I have the same frustrations. Things that I vent to our leadership. And I'm on council and I'm still frustrated. Our policies and our codes, I've been, since June, since June, since Mr. Perea, through Isaac, and now with Teresa. What is so hard for our staff to look at our policies? To clean up this city for beautification? Why is it so hard to see exactly like someone said, who are we renting to? And what are we, what kind of policies do we have in place to make sure if they're renting to not the proper people we want in the community, that they have the mechanism to get them out? Wh-what is so hard to look at it and say, let's review it? And then we come to find out that our zoning hasn't even been updated since nineteen sixty. So, it is a mountain of work, but we need to start doing that work. Because when people, we have no options. We haven't built a nice neighborhood in I don't know how long, going on fifteen years. So when they move out, they have no option to stay. And then that house either becomes a rental or gets sold to somebody who's not part of the culture, has been here for years. So, it does take a lot, but we can do, as legislators, we can do our part. But even though it's a timing process, we have to work on that, our codes and our policy. I also had a meeting today with the chief of police and the city manager. And I stressed, even though I believe, and I have no doubt, our police department is doing an admirable job and to the best of their means and resources, we as a community and we as a city need to do more. And I agree with that, we need to start in the schools. I don't know how to do any type of gang prevention or drug prevention. But we need to look for programs and work with our schools and, and do more. We, we can do more, we have to do more. Uh, we should always strive for higher, higher standards and regardless. So, we share your frustrations and we share your concerns. It is a slow process, uh, and we are working to do it better, but it's not like we're, we're in this bubble. You know, anytime somebody loses their life, it's a tragedy, regardless of how they lost their life. Whether it's through gang violence, through an accident, through illness. They're people. That's somebody's son, or daughter, or father, or mother, or, or child, or aunt, uncle. It's, it, they're somebody. And how they, and it's a tragedy. And the reality of life is life is dangerous. That's why every city has a police department. But we need like the common message to work together and start doing more. And if things are out of our means, what can we do that aren't, maybe we need to put our Crime Stopper number on our electronic billboard, just so people have a number to call. I hear, I hear your frustration and I share your frustration. And staff is working toward it. But it's like easier said than done. You know, easier said than done. Okay, now on city business, I did go to King's Upper Basin, uh, meeting. Once again, uh, we voted on grant projects for our Storm, Storm Greenwich. Selma did not win an award, but we're still in the running for the second round. They will be having a meeting, I believe, April seventeenth, which I may be out of town. So we'll have to find an alternate to attend to, once I verify my schedule.
I think I'm the alternate. If you could just give me the date.
Yeah, okay, I'll verify.
And the location.
Okay.
I'll be there.
All right. Uh, other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Uh, here we go again. We were back there in December and, you know, our Veterans Park, which is becoming a Veterans Park, which is a really exciting thing. We have our post, our American Legion, they're doing really exciting things. It's gonna make our second street look better. We have a developer that's coming in, looking around, wants to make Selma look better. And everybody says the same thing. We need to have safe streets, we need it safe here. And then we will move forward. You know, I hear it all the time, Selma is, is such a gem. We're right on the ninety-nine, we have so much potential. And we take steps forward and then we take steps back. And it just feels like deja vu. We were there in, in December, in Lincoln Park, we had a town hall meeting. Ms. Torres led our, our town hall meeting. We had zero, um, PD, protect us or show up or drive by. We did it, we citizens, and I think we are the solution. We are the ones, we're the ones who are gonna talk. If that's grandstanding, then so be it. Then we need grandstanders to make our city safe. And I say we need two more officers, and I say we need two more officers now. Along with another code enforcement officer. Dan, Dan Reese, you know, from our code enforcement. He's, he eloquently got up and spoke at the last meeting and said, hey, you know, infrastructure's good, it's important, but without the people, it's meaningless, it's worthless, there's no one to take care of it. We need code enforcement. And we hear about the people who are renting and, and how we need to monitor that, how do you do that? Frontlines are code enforcement, they're the ones. So we need two code enforcement. And at our budget meeting, I'm gonna be asking for two police officers to authorize the chief to hire two additional police officers and an additional code enforcement officer. Because we need to find it. Very important for our city. Because that will propel us forward. This, this weekend, it, it was sad, it was a weekend of violence. I mean, it was, it, it just underscores our priorities, what our priorities should be in this town, which is more money for safety and more money for officers, not at the expense of a police station, but a police station which we all want within its budget. Within the budget that the citizens gave for us when they approved Measure P three years ago. I think we need to do that. We need to use taxpayer money wisely. We need to make a safe city. Everything starts with that. Um, I appreciate everybody's texts and emails and passion, I share it. We're together on this, we're gonna keep moving forward. We're gonna bring this back to the agenda, the police station. And we're also gonna bring public safety back to the agenda. Because that's what's gonna clean up our town and we deserve it. Afraid? Afraid to walk your dogs at ten PM? You shouldn't be. You should be okay with walking your dogs at ten PM. We need safe streets. That is the essence of our town, we are a small town with small town appeal. Let's get back to that. Let's have public safety that makes us all feel safe. So thank you for that, thank you for your input. Back on to, um, to city business, I attended a council of governments meeting. Um, and I got an update on the regional housing situation. Governor Newsom's proposal to cut transportation funds, I talked to you, has talked to you about the council, that that's his stick for making us comply. That is, um, facing a legal challenge on the basis of Prop sixty-nine, which was something the voters passed to put a lockbox on those SB one funds. So, there is a challenge to Governor Newsom's proposal. Because he would be taking those funds, or using those funds as leverage for something that they weren't intended for. Not for roads. So that is facing a challenge. And even if that threat goes through, it won't be until twenty twenty-three. So we're not facing a cutoff of funds. However, we definitely, I, I mean, I was glad to hear that we got progress reports in for the first time for two thousand fifteen through seventeen. And I would definitely encourage that. Getting, getting in compliance on that. Because there are other cities out there that are falling off of compliance and we, we definitely need to, to move forward on that. A planner would also be a good thing. I spoke about our economic issues and about our opportunities. I would like to put on our agenda, request as an agenda item, have a discussion regarding a possible MOU. As the city manager and I discussed, regarding the Selma Grove project, which is next to Rockwell Pond. I've had some contact by the developer on that, who would like to come in front of all of us, in front of the public, to talk about making that place look good and making that place pop. Just like the veterans are gonna make Lincoln Park pop. We got some developers looking to make, to renovate our city. That is another opportunity for a commercial development. Selma Grove, next to Rockwell Pond. So if we could get that on, city manager, for the next meeting or meeting after that? Thank you. Um, also, I heard a, another thing from COG regarding the seven hundred fifty million promised by the governor. That is now potentially down to three million. Three million will go to COG for planning and, um, three million for sewer. So apparently, I wasn't the only one who said, hey, we're having trouble doing our compliance on our housing because we don't have the sewer lines to install, we don't have the sewer capacity. So apparently, we're not the only city and COG will be getting three million. And the first, the cities who are out of compliance, according to Tony Boron, the executive director, will be first in line for that money. And that hopefully will be in this, um, will be in this budget cycle. Um, Fresno County Rural Transit Authority news, great news, really good news. Um, I, I was blessed to be able to make the motion to approve the purchase of two point three eight additional acres at the maintenance facility yard. That gives the city and the maintenance facility almost ten acres. We're going on, we have seven acres now, and if that last parcel goes through, that will give the FCRTA ten acres to really make, to become a master hub of transportation in the South County. Everyone's going electric, government order, only orders electric cars. Everything is CNG, compressed nat- natural gas for this time, but everything is transitioning and we are gonna be the hub. We are gonna have the yard to be the place for all those vehicles from the school districts. Superintendent, are you listening? And, uh, the other, the other areas of the, of the, of the state that have transportation issues. Selma won that contract. We competed with Kingsburg and Fowler, we won the contract. Selma won the contract last year. We should be very proud of that, because this is gonna be a big job creator and, and, and it's gonna instill pride in our community. Because we are doing really good things in that regard. But again, we have to focus on public safety, we've gotta get that going. Uh, eight, eight right off, eight right away. And it could bring up to thirty or thirty-five jobs. And then when we get ten acres, that is enough room, according to Moses Stites, to bring in a state-of-the-art facility for a fast fill location. Kingsburg's putting in a small one, we're, we're gonna have a big one. And we're gonna be able to service a lot of, a lot of clients, um, that way. Um, I brought up, last thing, I brought up the issue of sales tax on the internet a few meetings ago. And, uh, I was reading in the paper where a court case involving that state of, uh, South Dakota versus Wayfair. So, it's been applied to California, and now California companies in the next few days, in the next few days. It's crazy, it takes forever and ever, and then all of a sudden it happens. Companies selling items over the internet, more than two hundred times with sales of over a hundred thousand will have to start paying sales tax in the areas where people buy. Selma gets one percent of all the sales tax, so that's a really good thing. So now Selma's gonna be positioned to get some sales tax on internet items that are sold. And, and quite frankly, it levels the playing field for the internet. They're, for a while, they've been skating, out-of-state companies have not had sales tax to deal with. It's given them an advantage, a price advantage. That's going away for companies that are selling a certain amount of items over the internet to California places, specifically Selma. So that's a good thing for the future of Selma's finances as well. Okay, with that, we'll move on to, um, oral communications. This is the last time for any members of the community to come forward and address the council on any item not on the agenda tonight.
I'm having my friend bring me up here, 'cause my vision isn't that well. But my name is, I'm not a public speaker. And my name is Viragera, and I'm concerned about the, all the killings and shootings we've had here in Selma. I've been to Fresno shopping, are you friends, I'm from Selma? Oh, how many shootings did you guys have today? Everywhere you go, you hear Selma shooting, Selma, this is the city of crime. We don't have a, a chief of police, like, I've never heard him stand up here and say what his plans are, what he has, what his intentions are. I think all of you are doing, trying your best to do something. But I haven't heard the chief of police say one word. When there's a shooting in some other city, you always have the chief of police say something. We're gonna do this, or we're doing that, or whatever. But I have never heard this chief of police say anything. I didn't even know what he looked like till right now. So, and in past years, when I was growing up, the chief of police knew everyone. Good kids, bad kids, everyone. They would help him out, talk to them, and that's, I think that's why we kept our city the way it was. But this one, I'm sorry. If we don't have a chief of police that's gonna take care of the city, we're dead. Everybody's gonna come in here because what? We have an easy place, they can come and shoot, do whatever they want to. I went to the church one night and I saw this drug addict coming down the alley. And then it was getting late, so I thought I'm gonna walk home, it's only a block away from my, from the church. Well, he was still waiting for me there in the corner. I had to find, and I did take my, my cellphone with me. I had to stop this man and ask him if I could use his cellphone so my husband could pick me up. One block from the church. It's not safe to be out there in the streets, and it shouldn't be that way. What is the reason for not hiring more officers? I'd like to know, what is it? Can you, I'd like to have you stand up here and tell us what you're doing, what your plans are. If you don't live here in Selma, I believe, you live in Fresno. So you don't care, you don't know what's going on here. Whenever there's a shooting, I never see you come up to the TV station and say, well, this is still happening, or I'm standing up for you, and nothing. Never. And all the other chief of police from other states do. And I probably said too much, but I appreciate what all of you, the councilmen are doing. Because you're all trying, all saying what you're gonna do, but not this chief. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
Um, I just wanted to say, I'm happy to be here this evening. And, um, the topic of safety is important to us. Uh, our, our board has been having lots of discussions about safety and, uh, school discipline and bullying. And we're just coming off of anti-bullying things happening in our schools. And I heard something from, uh, one of our pastors tonight and also from councilman Trahio. You know, this is a multi-faceted issue that we're dealing with. Um, we're looking at ways to partner with multi-agencies to address some of the things that we're seeing that are manifesting itself in behaviors that are resulting in, um, the safety issues that we're seeing in the communities and the behaviors that are being exemplified in children and breakdown in families and crime. It's a multi-faceted problem. And by us all coming together, collaborating together, locking arms together, whether we live here or not, we work here together, I think we're all here in Selma because we love Selma. We have a vested interest in being here, I do. And, um, I, the, the kids all know, they call me Mama Fisher. And I'm here because I wanna be here. So please know that, um, we are interested in partnering with you in any way that we can. And we are willing to work with you to make Selma a safer city. And that our schools are safe places. But we know that when kids leave us, they go home. And many times, the issues of home spill over back into the school. So, just know we're here as a partner, okay?
Superintendent, would you be receptive to going back to your board and maybe having a group meeting with the city council? To discuss safety? We had two for the Brown Act, but I'm talking about actually all of us getting together? Meeting maybe in a, in a venue like the Arts Center or something like that?
I'll, I'll take the information back to the board and talk about, that's, that's their meeting.
Great. Couldn't agree with you more, I think communication is, is of the utmost importance between the district and the city. Thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just make a comment that, um, we did-
Mister Mayor, if I might just make a comment that, um, we did, the police chief did issue, uh, information about what is be- he is doing right now in regard to this weekend's events. Um, if you'd like to expand on that, chief, I'd like to give you that opportunity right now. With mayor's permission.
Sure.
Mayor, as the council, I, I didn't, uh, pass on information to the city manager about what we did after the first incident on Saturday, we did, uh, add additional officers to the street, I did contact, um, Magic and, uh, the ACT team, and they have been in our city ever since the event took place. And they're gonna continue, uh, for as long as we need them, we're gonna be having additional officers in, in, uh, in patrol for the next several nights, um, adding to, uh, to what we've already had, and we are, thank goodness, fully staffed at the moment. Um, and in regard to the two events, there's not a lot I can say because there are, they are ongoing investigations, but I can tell you, these were, um, isolated targeted incidents, um, they weren't random. And, uh, we have information that, uh, could lead us to an arrest in a very short period of time, so.
Thank you, we'll be looking for that, thanks. Okay, with that, any other oral communications tonight?
Chief, thank you for that, we, we needed to hear what was going on and what your plan of action was, and, um, and we hope that it, it stays that way, and like you said, Mascara, it, it shouldn't have to take something like this, like back in December, to put people out on the street to make us feel safer. Uh, Mister Trahil, I liked hearing what you said about wh- what programs you wanna get together and, um, working with the school, I'm a true believer of that. My husband and I have volunteered for the police department for twenty years, we're domestic violence advocates. We worked for Care for Kids with Rose and Galvin, we were back at the police department when Chief Whiteside was there. We've coached Little League, we've been part of the school board, the school district. Um, my husband's coached the kids who were out in gangs, and now they're out of gangs, and they come to our house and call coach, and we have barbecues with them, so we're doing our part. I have volunteered, my, this is where I was born and raised, I love it, we adopted four children, we've raised them in this community. Two out of the eight people that Sarah just mentioned were my family members. And one was almost my son. So this is why I need to continue to fight for our community. And I agree, we need to work together. We want to create programs where we get the community involved with city council and programs like this. But we also need to have consistency out on our streets, because those are gonna take time to implement. But we have this going on right now, so we just want to see the consistent protection out on the street. We wanna see the patrolling, we don't want it to just go for a week or two and then stop and then wait for another killing or shooting. It could be a child, it could be one of these little kids up here. We don't wanna see that, so we wanna just can see, we war- are asking to please stay consistent and have this patrolling out in the streets until we can figure out what to do. We don't wanna just see it for a week or two, we want to see it consistently so we can feel safer. So we can figure out what we need to do as citizens to protect ourselves, to protect our families, to protect our homes and our businesses. So that's all I'm asking, is that we just keep a continued patrol out in the street. Like Mascara said, not just because something happened, now we're getting swarmed on the street, we love it, we love seeing it. Pull everybody over, I don't care, pull somebody over if they have a, an air freshener in the windshield, if you're not supposed to have it. Who knows, they could be a parolee, they could be a rapist, they could be, have weapons in their vehicle. If they don't, then they don't, they have nothing to worry about, but at least we'll feel safer knowing that maybe they took somebody off the street. That's all we're saying, let's just work together, that's what we want. But I just want people to know, this is why I feel the way that I feel, this is why I have the passion that I have. I'm not here to blame anybody, the chief is not responsible for the crime in our city. We just want him to have a plan of action when something like this happens. We're not blaming you as city council members for what's going on in our city. You know, you're responsible for the finances, that's what we want you to focus on, so we can have more officers on the street. That's all we're saying, we're not here to play, blame people, and if, and if it ever felt that I was doing that, I'm sorry. But I have, my family has experienced a lot of loss and a lot of pain. And still having my son deal with what he saw and what he experienced is what we deal with on a daily basis. So, I'm reminded every day of the crime in our city. So I'm just saying, let's work together, but let's keep the patrolling going so we feel safer in our streets, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, that's the end of oral communications, and is there a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second it.
We're adjourned.